Good morning, I'd like to call out the county's board and say I need you to order. Uh, Mr. Bradford, could you start us off on prayer, please?
Thank you. Good day. Oh wise and gracious Father, we thank you this morning, oh God, for allowing us to see another day, oh God. Father, we just want to thank you for our health, our strength, and being in our right now. And Father, we just ask right now, oh God, that you continue to cover us and keep us protected. And Father, we just pray, oh God, for your elected officials that you appointed in this city, in this county, and in this state, that you continue to give them wisdom from high to guide your people, keep them from any hurt or danger, oh God. Father, continue to bind them closely together that they may not fall more from the dove. And Father, we just continue to pray for our first responders, we pray for our schools. We just want to pray for our finances, our nurses, our doctors, that may be battling anything this morning, oh God. And Father, we continue to just pray for our finances, continue to make ways for this county, oh God. Let this county be a beacon, oh God, for the state. And Father, we just ask, Father, we pray in the name of Jesus' name, amen.
Chief Dollar, do you have any prayers, ladies and gentlemen?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, this time we'll have our own call. Supervisor Gray. Supervisor Hutchins.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Here.
Supervisor Gaines.
Here.
Deputy clerk, Paige Dean.
Present.
Central clerk, Brandon Lewis.
Present.
Board attorney, Scott Slumber.
Present.
County administrator, Angie King.
Here.
I am present as well. Next item on the agenda is to approve the dockets. Can I get a motion?
Don't move.
Hold on one second. Let's back up. Let's approve the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines? Second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Next on the agenda, we're going to approve the dockets.
Don't move.
Motion by Supervisor Gaines? Second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, we had, well, I had a problem with the consultant's case. I'm trying to think, I think we ever resolved that issue because it was only docking for $5,000. It used to be $4,000, so had we ever resolved that? Because we voted to take it off, I know they didn't get paid.
I don't have it. But did it change in October?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Did what change?
It went from $4,000 to $5,000 in the October.
Who approved it?
It was in the contract.
The automatic go to $5,000? Mr. Attorney, you know anything about that?
I already announced it in the meeting. But we can always terminate the agreement if y'all aren't happy with it.
I mean, I asked all these questions, man, and we ain't nobody know what's going on, so now with something you found in the minutes where it can automatic go to $5,000? Well, let me ask you a question, let me ask you this question. Don't nobody that write the checks know that it's going to automatic go to $5,000? So if somebody had to contact their office down there to tell them to take it up to $5,000? So where did that information come from?
Well, it came from me because the invoice comes to me. And I have to sign off on the invoice and send it to them. I didn't get the contract, I got the invoice, but I do remember the discussion when the contract first came out. So I remember and I put it in the budget for to increase it to their $5,000 because it was already a discussion. But the invoice, you know, is she paying basically on the, from the invoice?
I understand, but my only concern is that it was $4,000 and, Mr. Attorney, you said increase to $5,000? I asked these questions after I did the last.
Didn't remember when you asked them last.
Well, can you look it up?
There's a contract right here. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that was the day that Congressman Harper and Manning McPhillips came to the meeting back in March. And there was a notice in that contract in October, it was going to give a thousand dollars. Or $2,000, a thousand from the county, a thousand from the city. And I think the core prerogative was if we wanted to change it at a later date, we would be really interested.
Or we can cancel the agreement, I think that's why we left it.
So the boy is asking if it's going up to $5,000?
Going up a thousand?
Yeah.
I am. I'm just the one that was.
Well, I'm not going to hold the meeting up, but I think some of that magnitude should have been brought to our attention. And when it changed from $4,000 to $5,000, again, it should have been a good explanation of not automatic changing. Okay, right now, I'm going to let the motion pass, but I'm voting against it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I want the record to reflect that, uh, I'm not agreeing to raise the salary to $5,000. I'm just agreeing with the [__] dollar.
And then if we have automatic, things like that in the future.
Yeah, you need to let us know.
We'll bird dog that, you know, when it's coming up, not just when we do it, when it's coming up too.
Yes, it is about a new [__].
Like I said, I didn't remember it either, I probably had to go back and look.
Next item on the agenda is going to approve the Adams County Sheriff's Office financial report. Can I get a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Next item on the agenda is approve the financial report for Central Clerk's office.
Don't move.
Motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Next, we'll do the city government business, if any. So your city representation here, so we'll move on.
I'll ask a couple of questions, uh, getting along with Town Road. I understand we got the money in place, but, um, what is the next move? I'm not hearing from nobody, the city not saying nothing, the county not saying nothing. We supposed to get an MOU from MDOT, what is the status of that?
I emailed them, you not, because Ricky always asks about it and so forth, so do you, Warren. We asked on Thursday, what's the status on it? It's been, you know, about a week and a half, and we're supposed to get that MOU back. And they did not respond, so I'm going to call them again today and keep on calling and calling and calling until we get a response back on them. That's not, you know, out of the ordinary with MDOT dealing with them, having to nag them and so forth, that's what we're going to keep on doing. Our NDQ, the timeline hasn't changed, we're supposed to get an MOU from NDQ for phase two mid-December. And we believe that NDQ is going to be a little bit more streamlined than with MDOT. So we've got to stay on top of MDOT. Anyone that we can call to keep their binds on where we found ready to push these things through, we need to do it. And that's just where it is. They put it in the program, and evidently this program is, uh, again, they're not moving as fast as we'd like.
So let me ask you a question. Next year, we going to be in our, uh, pretty much start our last six months of our term. And to my knowledge, I thought we supposed to get all this cleared up before the last six months of our term? Because if we don't, then that means we not going to be able to start the project, right?
So, no, I don't believe so.
Well, hold up, hold up for a second. As one supervisor, I'm not going on with nobody to believe, I'm just going on facts from here on out. So call me the facts, and no disrespect, I don't want to hear nothing about what nobody believe. I want to know the facts, because Martin Town Road been going on since 2004, and them people are frustrated, and I'm frustrated. And, uh, we in a redistricting process, and, uh, one of the plans got 450 people to be moved into my district. Nobody else's district, but my district. So we need to deal with facts and not with nobody to believe.
I'll get you a full memo to show how we want to do that legally. The money will not flow into the road department, and so it won't have that curtail of the road department cap statute. What the purpose of that statute is for is so that you, the, an outgoing supervisor doesn't bankrupt the road department either last portion of office. It's the same issue that we're having with use tax money, and so we got the same opinion on that to get that done too. But I'll get it to you, showing you all, because I know, you know, I want to be very precise on it, so I'll send that over to you.
Thank you.
And believe, I'm frustrated too, I know you're, when, it rolls downhill, so I make sure I share our frustration to the other cases we get.
I ain't really frustrated, I'm just.
I am.
To the point where we even got money, lost money, now we got the money again, now to hold up somewhere else and.
And every day we lose money because it's losing its value and there's no sense.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because, uh, next year, uh, the project may go up 500 more thousand dollars. And we already got everything in place, and we can't get a MOU from MDOT to start this project. And when January come, then they going to say, well, it's 500 more thousand.
Exactly, every day.
That's crazy.
And more importantly too, I know you, I'm not telling this to you, Ricky, because you know, this is lives at stake. It's a dangerous road, it's dangerous now, it's been dangerous, every day it's dangerous, so let's get it fixed.
Man, that must don't think so.
Any more questions on city government business? Next, we'll make the departmental reports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, I think, um, but this is, um, Verne, and Justice Court. In regard to this, I announce the resignation of one of my clerks, Miss Peter Beal, that's aboard for me to post the job. And can we do the interviews on the night?
Ms. Johnson, Paige Dean needs a copy of that resignation letter, please, for the minutes. You heard the request for Ms. Johnson to advertise for this open position?
Second.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? We.
But we going to have a meeting on the night?
I'm not.
No, not meeting on the night, so we'll have to try to see what we can do this kid or something if we got people, but we don't, we don't have a meeting on the night.
Well, can we, can we figure the interview thing out?
Well, we'd have to just get with the board and see, see what they can get together. Uh, how long do you plan on advertising?
Um, okay, today, and on Saturday, on the fourteenth. So about two days. Well, including weekend, so. About nine days.
Is this a resignation letter?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Ayes, ayes. At this time, we need a motion to accept her resignation letter. We did a motion.
Just did it.
Okay.
We motioned for just one? Yeah.
Uh, so Ms. Johnson, my recommendation would be just go ahead and advertise, and we'll try to get with the board and figure out a date to set up interviews later on.
Okay.
Mr. President, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
In the process of advertising, couldn't you put it on the county website too?
Um, I don't think I knew that Brandon's doing this, I think.
Just could you get it? Can you get with Brandon to make sure it gets placed on there?
I will.
Thank you. Is that all you, is that all you have?
If I like it.
Thank you. Departmental reports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to get my reports for the month of November. We had 1,425 policies, PD. We had 490 for Adams County SO. The fire department has 32 with 16 in the county.
Any questions? Any questions from this panel?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Chucky Martin, I'm the first clerk for Adams County. Last board meeting, you asked me to find out more about the bucket truck. I did reach out to Reese Lockett, Adams Truck Sales, that truck is now $68,000. So it's went down from $79,000 to $68,000. But he did say there is no lease purchase, it's got to be a straight purchase.
You can do a lease purchase if you can get the finance. Get the bank.
Yes, ma'am. Can you repeat that, please, I've been hearing?
Uh, Ms. Martin checked on the bucket truck, and the price has gone from $79,000 to $68,000. But there's no lease purchase option, it would have to be a straight purchase, unless Scott just said something.
If the, if it's a bank, if they lease purchase, you know, if they'll finance it, if the latter option. You might have to go to the company. But they may not lease purchase or finance a used piece of equipment.
And I, um. It's just you. We advertised for bids for the SCBA's for fire services. We had two bids. One was from EEP in the amount of $87,612, and the other is from NAFCO in the amount of $85,956. And then speaking with Mr. Smith, he did, um, talk to the volunteer firefighters, they did have a preference as far as the equipment brand that they wanted, and that was through EEP from Scott, because it coincides with what the city has as well.
They wanted a what now?
They had, you know, like a preference as far as the brand, because, um, with EEP, yeah, with EEP, the brand is Scott. And with NAFCO, the brand is Drager. Yeah. And they did prefer the Scott's brand through EEP because it does coincide with what the city uses as well. And from my understanding and working with Ms. Ms. Glennette here, then we do have a FEMA grant that was approved in the amount of $96,714.28. The county matches 5%, which is the $4,835.72. And it's totaled at $101,550. But what she's saying is, and make sure I'm right on this, is that the county would have to pay upfront, and then they would begin, get reimbursed by the FEMA grant.
Sounds, sounds what I mean. The only thing I hate about it, that reimbursement thing.
Yeah. You have a copy of the bids for the, is the one that they prefer, a higher bid?
Yeah.
So you can accept the higher, the higher one, what's the difference between the two?
Two thousand, yeah.
Less than $700. Seventy hundred dollars on a $100,000 deal?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's less than 2%. I thought the grant was like 100.
No, it's $6,000.
It's $101,550 with the 5% made.
So it's less than 5% difference in price, is that correct? And this equipment matches what the city's using?
Yes.
And that helps for training purposes or something? What's the benefit of that? You need to get the spell out while you can go with a higher bid in the minutes, it's okay, you just have to save.
It's a safety thing, if the city is responding into the county calls, and a firefighter in the county gets into a situation where their equipment's failing, that city agent responding is able to match that equipment to immediately extract, you know, extract that new amount.
I think that's fine.
Is it?
Not a material difference.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Make a motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes.
We also discussed, um, at the last board meeting about, um, Brad's department getting the vehicle with the money that was awarded through the grant that they had. Um, I did reach out to Wes at Curtis Auto World, who is one of our state contract vendors. Um, from what, from my understanding, and this is with any of the vehicles, he's saying the way they're doing it now through the manufacturers is that they would have to have a buyer's order, which is basically a write-up from him, where someone signs basically saying that the Adams County Board Supervisors requesting X amount of vehicles. Um, it's not legally binding to where we have to get those vehicles. If something comes up and we decide not to get those, he said that's fine because he knows he'll be able to sell them, or, um, we can do a purchase order. Now, he did say that that's the way the manufacturers are doing it now. They would need something in writing as a request stating that they can get the vehicles. Now, from what he told me, if we do go ahead with the PO or the buyer's guy, he said at the late the truck should be on the ground by 5:00. And the state contract price on the round 1,500 is $38,767,000.
You need a motion there? Don't move. Second by Supervisor Gaines, can you say?
Sure.
Second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
And what was this truck going to be used for?
That's it. This truck is part of our IMSA grant, it'll be used by our medical services, that's the only thing it can be used for. And they'll, they'll take full on, it belongs to the county, but they'll do all the insurance and stuff, put their logos on. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes.
We also, um, discussed about the sheriff's department vehicles, they are requesting 10 vehicles. Um, same with them as well. I talked to Curtis Auto World in reference to the trucks, he said the same thing in reference to that. Basically, a buyer's order or PO, he can't get the truck, um, there would still be the $38,767 a piece. Um, with any extra, it will be, um, added to that cost. Um, for 10 trucks, it will be approximately $387,670. We also have the estimated cost from Enterprise, which would have been a lease purchase, they can also obtain the vehicles. Um.
Now, lease purchase would be a straight lease.
Yeah, that, theirs will be a straight lease through Enterprise. And basically, from the totals that we received, and also forwarded this to Ms. King and Mr. Slumber. Um, the monthly cost per vehicle, if we leased them, would be $731, um, times 10 is $7,310. That yearly cost would be $87,720 a year. But the upfront cost would be, they would require $5,000 down payment per vehicle, and an aftermarket cost of $8,985.48. So those totals together are $13,985.48, times 10, the upfront cost would be $139,854.80. If we went with the lease through Enterprise.
$139,000?
$139,854.80 upfront. And then there will be a $87,720 cost per year for the lease monthly cost.
And I was kind of confused, the lights package that you sent, those are, that's all you would need for the
That's.
Lights and whatnot, the.
Yeah.
Because it didn't have, but it didn't have them for a bunch of vehicles, it had like only five of them, I would assume they want light packages on all the vehicles.
Normally, well, from the previous quotes that we got before we did the first lease, um, it's a bar light package, and it's a sleek top package. So I just told them to do a quote for each one, and, you know, depending on which vehicles they're going to put what package on. And with that, that would be if we went through Curtis Auto World, because I think with Enterprise, I'm not exactly sure. But normally, they do the upfit, they include the cost for the upfit.
Sheriff, you have anything you want to say on this?
No, I really don't, listen, um, not really, I don't, I know Chucky has done his job well. And I know some of the confusion was about whether we should stick with Enterprise, or do it on our own. And, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to say this, if you're going to actually do it, if you're going to actually do it and put something in place where you can, where you're going to actually do the vehicles and the timing and the running, that's one thing. But I think, you know, myself, I like Enterprise because it's convenient, but I understand when it comes to the county, if it's something that that you all feel like need to be brought in-house, I'm not fighting you. At this point, I got 11 vehicles over here that I'm ready to get, uh, Angie King here, that have to come off the inventory, including one that was just recently towed. So to me, we just need, we need vehicles, and Enterprise has been convenient, but whatever the county decides, that's what it is. What kind of warranties come with those vehicles? Are they, are they backed down to 36,000 miles, or? I mean, they used to go to 100,000. Now I think they backed off of that. Okay. Well, for the vehicles that I've seen coming through here, they usually have free year, like 36,000 miles on them, 36,000 mile warranty. They don't really give the 100,000 mile warranty when it comes to leased vehicles, because we. And y'all rough on them. We, we, we kind of like oil field when it comes to vehicles. It's kind of like oil field when it comes to vehicles, but it just. Kind of stung. It kind of stung, so. But, but the thing is though, the thing about it is they trade them out where your value is high. And just like if you, if you got stuck with Enterprise this year, from my understanding, that you really wouldn't have a down payment because they're going to sell the vehicles that are supposed to come out, and that goes and covers your down payment. That's what, that's my understanding of it. So this year, if you, if you went with it, you wouldn't even have a down payment.
Yeah, I had to make sure.
Well, it was.
I mean, it's what they do is basically what the sheriff is saying, they get you on a program where you're going to sell your cars within three to four years. I think these, they projected 48 months.
Yeah, the first ones that we purchased through Enterprise, they are looking for resale this year, and that's why you wouldn't have it because they at the value point where you can sell them, make your money, and it'll cover you, it's supposed to cover your down payment. I don't take a wheel right now, because I went to the car lot the other day, and I'm just going to be honest with Supervisor Gaines. They got everything marked up, 8,000 above sales price because they cannot get any gifts. So the values on vehicles are high right now. Above sticker, just 8,000 above sticker if you are to buy a car right now.
Yeah, I was just looking at, just adding to what she was saying. Um, you got 130 something thousand, um, down payment on it, and $87,000 a year. Well, by the time you keep it three years, you done paid that $400,000 for the vehicle. So you know what I'm saying, if you going to end up purchasing, this is just me, just one supervisor, I'm just looking at numbers, round off numbers. If you're going to pay $400,000 for a vehicle in three years, you know, get rid of it, we just want some purchases and own.
Well, here, here's the concept behind what Enterprise does, and me and Scott and everybody have really done a lot of talking about this. Where Enterprise is winning at is they selling it, and you keeping your maintenance low because they're selling it right around where those warranties are starting to wear off. And that's the thing, is maintenance is what you. And, and that's the thing. It is, is maintenance is where you really save your money. If you gonna have something in place where every three years, these vehicles roll off or if you get up to like, like a, what is it? Missouri Highway Patrol that we buy UC cars for. They sell theirs around fifty thousand because it's just, it's more convenient, less maintenance. You don't have to get into pretty much anything other than tires, oil changes, maybe a front end alignment or something like that. And that's where you win it. But when you start purchasing, and I get the purchases and I get ownership, trust me, I do. But when you get the purchasing and you extend them out, if you go back and look at the vehicles that we purchased and, and when we get above fifty, that's when you see those maintenance costs start to rack up. And they get rid of it before that time comes.
I mean, if you sell them and you get above the down payment price, yeah, you know, then that, that'll be the better option. Because I'm just looking at, oh, Peter Towne, he gonna keep them average cost about three years. And, and in three years with a sheriff car, you gonna put more than thirty-six thousand miles on it. And I'm looking at it, and so I'm looking at, and if you put, keep it more than three years, you put more than thirty-six thousand on it, then that mean we gonna still have to start eating some of the maintenance costs on it.
Well, that's if it, that's if, that's if it's being broken and torn down now. Like, you can't always say that it's just gonna automatically be a maintenance issue. It just depends on, depends on the car. True, he told, depends on how y'all do these roads. Hey, I'm with you supervisor Gaines. Look, I'm with you. Look, am I in front of your lap when we do? I'm with you now, trust me. So, I'm just saying.
Now, isn't, isn't the maintenance fully covered through Enterprise the length of the lease?
Yes, it is. It is.
No mileage cap?
There ain't no cap. There's no cap on it. It's easy.
It's all length of the lease.
Yeah.
We still pay.
What the only thing is? You pay it, but you pay it at a cut rate. You know, they worked out deals with all these people where they supposed to get a better.
I like their concept. I just don't see the value that, I love their, the idea of what they're doing. I think it makes a lot of sense. But we're doing that plus paying them money to do it when we could just make a decision in my mind, we're gonna sell these cars in three years, just like we do when we do Robbie's equipment, have the equipment. We said, we're gonna buy this, but we're gonna sell it in this period of time because that's how we maximize our value. You know, I, I, to me, you're paying Enterprise ten grand a year to do something that we can decide to do ourselves.
And I'm gonna see.
President? I mean, this, this is nothing. This is what I brought to this board a while back when I said in other counties, what they was doing, even with the supervisor vehicles. They're, they're driving till they sold. Truck I'm driving now costs twenty-seven thousand dollars plus tax, whatever the case may be. And it's, it's less than fifty thousand miles. If we would have got rid of the truck three years ago, that truck was worth forty-five thousand dollars on the market. So we would have got more for the truck than we paid for the truck, than could have turned around and bought another truck and still had money. So I've been saying that.
That's pretty much what they're doing.
That is what they doing. But let me tell you what you're really paying for with Enterprise. They got a system down pat and you, and like the guy said, you really paying for the experience. And they are very experienced at doing this. And when you go in and you look at the maintenance and how everything's aligned, how everything's task oriented and in place, you gotta ask yourself, if you take that away over ten grand and that's what the, the costs come to, who you gonna get to do that? Because right now, Chucky is having to get the purchases. Who's gonna keep up with all that wind it needs to go? I'm saying you pay for convenience and in this case, it's work. But those guys have that thing down to a science. They tracking every single invoice. And they're making sure that when it, when it begins to be a problem, it needs to go. So I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying with, with how people are loaded right now, that's just something to consider big time.
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. President, I mean, it's easy. It's just my opinion. It's easy. Who gonna keep up with it? Who want the vehicle? If your department got ten vehicles and he want ten more vehicles, your department gonna keep up with it. If the road department want vehicles and they, and they, they wanna trade them in when they get a certain amount of miles, the road department gonna keep up with it. If the board of supervisors want five more board of supervisors vehicles, then Carvet gonna keep up with it. We, we got people in our department, if that's what we worrying about, to keep up with the mileage or whatever the case may be. We don't have to pay about ten thousand dollars to do that.
Well, let me say this supervisor Gaines, I'm glad you brought that up. And I'm only gonna say this now and go and put this out here. For two years, for two years, we had come over here consistently and brought stuff ahead of time. And nothing moved on that. And that's why for two years now, we have been out of contract buying vehicles. So when you say that, every time we come over here, we bring what we need to bring. We bring the PO, we bring everything we need, and it still gets shut down right here. Just like Chucky had to come in here this morning on something we had already did.
But that ain't your job.
It, but you're saying, I'm asking who's gonna keep up with it. It is not. No, this didn't anyway, but it still didn't happen.
Sheriff, y'all bringing vehicles over here when it's supposed to be brought by the purchasing clerk. Robert can't bring no vehicle over here when it's the purchasing clerk's job to do it. Y'all department was doing it on y'all own. Now, every time y'all wanted vehicles, before COVID hit, we tried to get you the four, the five vehicles you asked for. That's before COVID hit. Now, once COVID hit, well, nobody getting vehicles like Thomas about. That's just me.
Listen, I ain't trying to argue with nobody. All I'm saying is before COVID hit, we had a lot of stuff in place that every time we come over here, well, this ain't been looked at, we need this, yeah. I'm just putting it out there for real.
So you want me to get your vehicle?
No. Let me say this. We got them, but look at what we had to pay for afterwards because we got them so late. I'm saying consistency matters. We talking about we improving all this stuff. Consistency matters with that. Whatever y'all do, y'all do. I'm just saying, if we need to do, we can handle it, but you, you putting so many things in so many different places with this. I understand she the purchasing clerk. We talk a lot. And I love Chucky because she has great, outstanding communication skills. But the reality, but here's, something gotta change somewhere along the line. If you go that route, just make sure it's consistent. That's all I'm saying.
Angie, do you have a thought on this?
I have no opinion. Because I receive emails. You know how different counties do, do emails. And the question came up about Enterprise and no other counties are dealing with Enterprise because they, they, they don't like the way it's done and it's being questionable as far as the county with lease purchases. And I, I understand that there was a time where we couldn't get vehicles and Enterprise wasn't available. But, you know, things that was keeping us from, you know, financing or whatever, everything is back in place. And I just think we need to go back to the traditional, you know, way of doing purchases.
Okay.
She's already done her homework and she saved that person her work and gives these vehicles. So I think we need to start after the finance.
Okay, the ten or eleven vehicles, you're gonna, they're gonna turn in. What kind of money are we talking about getting for those?
I don't know.
These are Enterprise vehicles. These are some of the, these ones that I have on this list right here, I'm gonna give to Carvet. They are, they are much older vehicles. Some of them twenty thirteen, whether the oldest one is a twenty eleven. They are twenty elevens all the way through. And we have one twenty twenty on the list because the deputy got T-boned and hit, somebody ran a red light, T-boned, bent frame, blew all, all airbags, so we know it's gone. So I can't, I can't tell you on the right top of my head, but I do have this so we can track it.
I'm assuming we got insurance?
Yeah, insurance.
Right on that.
Yeah, the, the.
But they build them back together or they totaled it?
No, they totaled it. It, it came, you know, they build them different now. And so it broke the frame and everything. Deputy loved to be walking at this point. So, but I have them right here, so.
Are they scheduled to be sold or are those gonna be rotated down?
No, they, they, they coming out, these are scheduled to be sold. These are scheduled to be sold.
We can't take them off.
If they not already sold, I'm just not sure. I'm just not sure on whether they already sold or they scheduled to be sold. They might already be sold.
I guess my question should have included, okay, what's the value of those vehicles? Is it fifty thousand, a hundred thousand?
I can tell you now, looking at these here and the, and the use, just looking at the ones on here, I can tell you ain't none of these gonna be close to fifty because all of them gonna have over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand.
I mean, the whole block.
I had to get that list.
Yeah, Court, Court Bennett's gonna have to review that list to see if, they, they may be also not even on our people's report. I don't know. I don't have the list yet. I, I just reviewed it. But Court Bennett will have the list to determine. Court Bennett will have to do it.
That, that's fine though. But there ain't nothing I can't get you today. I can get you that.
Oh, I think we need to try and make a decision on this. But I just looking at this, I think supervisor Gaines did set, kind of add it up too. We probably better all buy our own vehicles and just take care of them.
Hey, whatever the board decides, we, whatever, whatever y'all decide, y'all decide. You asked for an opinion, that's why I gave it to y'all. If we need to do it in-house, we ain't never had a problem doing stuff in-house. When stuff started to actually get outsourced, that's why we did what we did. So whatever we need to do, if we can talk about it, we can work it out.
What's the desire of the board?
I'm making one of us when you just purchased ten vehicles.
My supervisor Wilson, second, my supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ayes or no?
Thank you, board.
Good morning, board. Everybody's sounding up for us. I've got a couple of things this morning. Some of you may know, we have two individuals in the county that's our federal single outdoor warrant sirens certified. With that comes a big responsibility because we have a lot of our smaller counties in our district that need help with these sirens. Everybody can't get rid of sirens because that's some of their two-way notification doing some of their storms. But our two guys, I think, Gavin President Middleton, he's been in with the other board presidents to try to seek him, our guys going, try to at least help them out, see what they need to do. If they're not doing the work, they just go and do a survey, look at what they need for the upgrade. They're not doing any work and stuff like that. So I think I did get with Scott on that to see how we can get a reimbursement from those guys traveling to these locations. And they, they have been keeping up with their knowledge and their time. And I just got to present something to Scott, sent to the other boards. I think it was Woodson County. I think Jefferson County is North College and I think it's Pike County. And they are all in our district. So the guys will be traveling them under some miles out. But they just like to try to work on other people. They, they're just doing a site assessment to try to help these counties out. So I would ask the board if we can try to submit a request back to the other boards to just pay for their knowledge and their hours that they spend during the assessment on that.
Sounds fair enough to me.
You heard the question, supervisor?
So did.
My supervisor Wilson, second, my supervisor Gaines. As Mr. Racker said, I did receive a call last week from the city manager in McComb. And, and I've also spoken with board president Woodson County on this in the past. And we have two guys who are training to do this and I think it's a helping our neighbors, if that's what you want to call it. And as long as we cover our expenses, I think it's the right thing to do.
I got a question. Scott? Are they gonna be traveling in county vehicles?
Yes, they, yeah, because they.
Scott, can we get reimbursed going to Woodland County vehicle from another county?
More than as much as we can, but it's depending legal review. So I can get with, with Brad. I'm, you know, pretty confident that there's kind of a little bit of flexibility in terms of emergency training or assistance and things like that. But just if any legal review will be in there.
Right. And what it's called, it's called a state mutual compact that we all sign. And when they do an emergency, it's like when Robin went down to our, where we go, Robin, to, to serve, help remove debris. So as long as it's an emergency, something like that, that we need help, we can, we can still do that. Like I said, well, we didn't charge them for fuel and nothing like that. But I think they did for fuel in our trucks. So it's just one of those things where county can work out. You know, we not charging like a, you know, their, the county is, you know, outranges rates. You know, we just trying to recruit the gas money back, so.
I, I don't have a problem. I just want to make sure that we.
Yeah. All in favor? All opposed?
Another thing I want to bring up, we talking about vehicles. I wanted board to try to look at the supervisors. I want, you know, if y'all can put some emergency lights on your vehicles, the, the yellow lights, so when you out in the county or you gotta stop side of the road, you know, my guys know who you are because, you know, just putting flashes on, they can't read the sign because you don't have a big display and stuff like that. So indeed, like I said, a lot of the, the emergency crews to the, the light people, you know, y'all are traveling, they don't know who you are. So, but I think Robin, most, most every vehicle like that is going to that light now.
We got bad light, a lot of them going green lights and.
Yeah.
On the back, green and clear light.
Yeah. So I, yeah, so I recommend, you know, we need to do that for all our emergency vehicles that's gonna be out doing that. To try to help us know who's what and who's who.
Brad, what about mine? I got like this on top.
That's all we got.
I got, yeah, I got, like, I got one on top of my truck. And it's ready to change the white and yellow, stuff like that. When I'm out, I put it on. So, you know, it's a, you, you'll know I'm not a regular vehicle with emergency.
Well, Brad, you know, those things on the TikTok is over. You know, supervisor, I mean supervisor.
That's all we had.
You know, we need to go with, go with the traditional ones, put it in there because anybody can purchase those and do that. So, you know, it, it, it is a difference on that. When you drive up on it, then you see that one light and not a pattern because people know that. So, yeah, let's not try to be cheap. Let's try to get some good lights.
I'm just saying, I'm following the road.
I'm just saying because we did that pass on the right. So they said, they were just doing to get back. So, but like I say, you go to other counties, they have them, like I said, they have professionals done debris. So you'll know, you know, that's a, that's a county vehicle. I'm just bringing it up.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Racker, because I stop a lot of time, pick up stuff off the side of the road or whatever, cutting a tree or whatever. People will just about run you over. Now, they see different lights. It might look like it's a visual vehicle.
Right.
And maybe they'll slow down a little bit more.
Could you get a price on what it gonna cost per vehicle before we decide we gonna do all of that?
That's gonna be on make and model. They make them different one, different make and model. So, you know, whatever vehicle y'all got, just let me know. I can, I can get my people up those, they can record that on that.
I ain't telling you, you need thirty-six thousand dollars.
What I'm just saying, just I'm saying, so I had to use your vehicle supervisor.
Yeah, I got, yeah, he got it good enough for me to that. I, I don't look at the operation, how they doing, what I'm supposed to be doing. So I, I, that vehicle for a county supervisor, we in unit system, I don't think I'm gonna need it.
What I'm just saying, it's a, you might not need it, as you say, but if somebody use your vehicle, they still have it acid in it. So, you know, that's, that's your, the board has a group zone. The last thing is, are we planning to have a county Christmas party? But I know we had, I had heard nothing great about them that. Uh, so I'm saying you gotta have money. I ain't paying for it. You know, y'all didn't give the raise, so I can't about meet something. I'm just. Now, I'm just saying the supervisor's gonna do that. We need to try to block the safe room. That's why I was, we don't still wanna do that. So we got a date for? No, no, I don't plan it. Y'all, y'all just tell me what we gonna do. I try to reserve.
We could, he planned. When y'all last thing were?
We sixteen, fifteen.
Thursday, not just Thursday, it was Friday, Thursday, whatever day that is.
It needs to be more than.
On that Thursday.
On that Thursday, that's what you.
On that Thursday? What's the date?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Fifteen, okay. So fifteen be soon? Okay. That's all I have to do. Question board.
Do we need a motion about the lights?
No. We got a price now.
You just need to know what vehicle we have.
Well, I'm just saying, if y'all make a motion, y'all will throw that out. Then I can do a price. Y'all can do it, we can get those vehicles.
Alright, thank you.
Good morning, board. Alright, three hundred and sixty-seven nine-one-one calls, a total of twelve hundred and three responses. Like I said, three sixty-seven to nine, nine-one-one, two hundred and thirty-seven to those resulting transfers. We're at eight twenty-two in the city, eighty-seven percent, and twelve thirty in the county, eighty-nine percent. Both of those improved and the times improved. With similar call volume, there's literally a two-call difference between October and November on volume. Fifty-nine refusals after we got there. There are twenty patients that were, we, no patient found on scene and then sixteen canceled prior to arrival. Site calls were reduced by over fifty percent. They went from sixteen in October to seven in November. And this is typical of the trends that we see in the cooler months. Two hundred and forty-seven times that we had multiple ambulances on calls in Adams County at the same time. Two flights from the field. We're still doing pretty good with the hospital on our wall times, but that information is. Uh, two flights from the field, we're still doing pretty good with the hospital, uh, on our, our wall times, uh, but that information is included in there. Proud to announce, I did hire another paramedic, and so our staffing continues to climb, and that has defined the odds across the state of Mississippi because everybody's short and we're continuing to hire. That's working good, uh, we're gonna continue our processes for that. I have two patients that I'll need to follow up with the sheriff on, their addresses are, we're going to them twenty and thirty times in a month. And they're walking out of the hospital as soon as we get there, they're not even going in and staying. They're standing on the back of that truck, walking in through the ER door and run out the patient, the, the, the foot traffic door and the, and the check-in desk. They don't, they don't even stay, they're using ambulances, uh, fraudulently, uh. I'll identify the supervisor that's relative to that patient location and demographic, and include them in the discussion of what needs to happen, but we're at a point where I'm fixing to start reporting because they are medicated patients, and I'm fixing to start reporting for fraud. They are fraud and medicated by doing this, so, uh, get it with the sheriff, identify the supervisor, and include the supervisor in the discussion. So if there are any questions, uh, we can, we can have that information to the supervisor, and they'll be able to answer those questions if they're asked. Y'all have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Good morning, board. Much of lunch and cheer, will you be able to, uh, do the cash roll dishes like you normally do?
I guess could.
Thank you. Just tech me, or get with Jason, so, okay. Alright, thank you. Uh, first thing I have this morning, board, uh, Asshaw project, we had a meeting last week with AIPAC, uh, rent, we, rent went real well, um. They're, uh, compiling some, uh, roads and putting four or five roads together, um, of where they gonna start and where they going next. They would keep us three to four days, uh, ahead of schedule of where they headed, uh, when they do start. I was hoping they was gonna start this morning, uh, but they're still trying to finish up State Park, they get, start on the other end of State Park, coming back to the lift they had. Um, so they all working on that, trying to get the file, you know, get that finished up, and then they're working on the intersections down south. Um, with that being said, after the first of the year, they're hoping to bring another crew in from another area. If temperature or weather allows, to have three crews in Adams County trying to get those roads to get them complete. Um, I will have someone with the county, uh, to go around and collect tickets and things to make sure we stay within the tonnage of what we, or what was told to us per road, to, uh, make sure we do get all the roads. Any questions?
When are you shutting the plant down?
December tonight, they gonna shut it down for a three-week stint, and then they said they could, it could come back up, um, you know, January the third, their schedule, come back to work, the crews are, and that's, like I said, that's the weather, and, you know, things allowing them to do that.
Okay.
Alright, I have a full dirt request at thirteen Grafton Heights, Dwight McGee.
You heard the, uh, motion by supervisor Gaines?
Sir.
Second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed?
Uh, that call was morning, um, Gwen Williamson Punches has rented a building, uh, capital building over there in the parking lots, county owned, they say they paid the county for the rent or whatever, uh, to the, uh, parking lots, house, pot hole, and things like that, and run out to board and see if that's something our responsibility, or what do we do, or what do you know about it, Scott? I, I don't know anything about it either. Well, it's just, that's right next to sanitation right over here, that parking lot, it's the right side of sanitation.
Yeah.
They say that's county's, and they paid the county, uh, rent, and they want parking lot there.
Well, how's the rental agreement drawn up? Do they have to fix the building, or, you know, if anything goes wrong with it, or?
I only know we own the building, that's why you not bring it forward, I just parking lot.
And I've never heard of your experience from us.
Me either.
So I, I just trying to get directions.
Uh, Mr. President, won't y'all look into that and find out what's going on, and get back with us in January when we come back? So, I ain't never heard of it.
There might be a rental agreement from the board.
Might have a lot of managers, former board attorneys out there.
The, uh.
Probably shouldn't say anymore.
Last, last board meeting, we discussed, uh, election, um, things, precincts, and calling ahead of time and things like that. Uh, I think it went a little better, I, I think we got them out, and everybody got contacted, we got them there, uh. I did talk to, um, Mr. Gardner, or, where, and, uh, he's looking into buying a trailer, enclosed trailer, uh, said they had some money, he's looking into buying one, or, or, they had somewhere to store, so he put it at the money shop under the shed out there. Uh, you know, he said they could carry it around or whatever, do it, but, uh, I just want to bring that forward, board, I think it did go well, we didn't get any phone calls as far as our office or our things, um, you know, not being open-earr people, you know, not being there, so, uh, I know last time was a little confusing.
Oh, right, Mr. President, so, when you say buying a, a trailer to haul the voting machines?
Correct.
So, who, who be the, they gonna use, uh, the trailers already be drivable, or?
No, it's, it's pulling, see Brad and him, uh, at this point, they got one, and their two guys hauling around now. Well, the first time Brad didn't have a class, we had to go pick them up, so it was a little confusing there, but this time the storm came, it was the night before, and people was out, and then his guys was manning the safe room and out about, till about two AM, and, uh, so about nine o'clock, it was, they were calling, I don't know where the trailer was, well, I thought the guys was there, and I said, I don't know. Then we spoke with Darryl Smith, so Darryl told us, and then Brad called, he was off, but he called me, and I thought it been doing vacation, we take care of it, and we did get took care of their guy.
So y'all be getting the trailer?
We did get the trailer and their truck, well, they, they, he, their guy come in, but it was, you know, hour late, we sent it out after the night, you know? Um, but Mr. Gardner just said that they had had some money in their kitty or whatever, and they were coming by. And then they said they had some pickups over there too, but I think it's gonna fall into what you just said, the county have to go to it every time, and still do it. Which we sent two men every time, uh, to do, so, I guess it'd be, if he had money, that's his money.
Me, me personally, I, I think it's more of a communication thing, uh, with, with Mr. Gardner communicating to with whoever he need to communicate with, with the use of the trailer, I mean, just go buy the trailer, I, I.
Well, like I said, the communication was there, but I think what happened was, it, you know, this time the guys, and it was, they, you know, that storm come in, and those guys was out to two o'clock or whatever, and, 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 you know, it was time they got on, got bed or whatever, I'm sure they were a little late getting there, which was, you know, I don't.
So what about the road department guy?
Sir?
What about the road department guy?
They were there, which all mines didn't go out that night, you know, I mean, it was the two guys that went, wasn't out all night, they were, you know, fresh.
So let me ask.
But mine still come in, whether they stay out all night or not, except.
Let, let me ask you a question, because in the past, where, where maybe I was seeing some, and I ain't know what I was seeing. In the past, I thought the road department got with the election commission, and I always seen your guys pulling stuff around for the election commission, so we have that channel where somebody else is doing this and they not available. Cause your guys always be.
Correct, Mr. Gardner come with that, that, uh, you know, at times when we were doing it, it was taking two trucks out of every crew, cause we was hauling them in the trucks at the time, and it was taking two to three men, so it was taking, just say, nine men to do it, and in time, we spent three-quarters of the day, then I, that day was shot, so that's a Monday, and then, and then a Wednesday. So, I mean, we're losing roughly eighteen, twenty hours that week.
Hold, hold, hold that thought.
I got it.
That's when you needed manpower to deal with big old machines.
Correct.
We don't have big old machines no more.
Correct.
We got little suitcase's now, so you, you won't need your whole crew to do suitcase's. And from, the, nah, I'm getting from back there, you might go get some assistance from the sheriff department to help you go out where you gonna have all your men. I just think, if we communicate this in a time and manner together, we could work this out, we don't have to have trailers just sitting over there.
We down, we down to two men is what we're using, and then Mr. Bradford's got two men, and then the election committee has two people. So it's down to six people that's handling, you're right, we were able to narrow it down, but we didn't have an enclosed trailer, so I think that's where Mr. Bradford got involved, that they had an enclosed trailer, so they had the trailer, but then he just let his two guys, the volunteers that he's got, join in to help. But sheriff, I see radio hand, so.
Yeah, let, let, let me say this, if they coordinated, and if you, if they communicated, we can set up a detail strictly for to get the voting machines out. We got plenty horsepower to move, whatever needs to be moved, and we have an enclosed trailer, I'm not trying to knock somebody for getting a trailer, let me be clear on that. But we do have a big trailer that we seized, and I think that's the one that, that's the Bradford has been using for this, is the one that we actually seized that the sheriff officer got awarded to us, so, we don't have a problem getting y'all getting voting machines out of it. You give me twenty-four, forty-eight hours notice, I hang your crew red, and we, we can get them out.
There it is, that is.
We can, we can do that, so.
Alright, we gonna try that next go round, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, next thing I have, uh, Road Managers Association, uh, secretary, uh, has took a road manager position, uh, Latanya, her road manager retired, so she took it, they're interviewing secretary for this position at the Road Managers Association, uh, Meg's name was brought up as one of the nominees, whatever, to be interviewed, she's been working with Tommy Jones, which is the president of Road Managers Association, about this first responders and things like that, trying to get them involved, you know, to, all the road departments to be first responders, so her and Tommy been back and forth, so he asked me, would she be interested, I asked her, she said she would, uh, they're interviewing in Jackson at our meeting on January the twenty-fifth, uh, she said she would take a vaca, a day's vacation to go interview, but if she gets selected, the county that is select, or whatever, takes care of the expenses of that person for every meeting, it's not paid through the association. We thought it was, so we tried to do that, but, uh, Tommy's saying it's not, that, I think they're from Tunica, Latanya was, and, uh, so she took the road manager position, cause her, she was the secretary, he retired, and she took that, so they're looking, somebody here, so it's.
I, I don't have a problem with, with nobody wanting to do whatever, but we need to get a clear understanding from the beginning what her role gonna be and how much we gonna pay, cause we got one employee that assists with M, M A, with the supervisor association, and she been doing that for a long, long time, and I think she might have got traveled, how many times?
Three.
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 Three times, and the whole time she been traveling, so for us to just say we gonna compensate somebody for doing pretty much the same thing, uh, I don't have a problem with.
It's not the same thing, they go to our meetings, and they take all notes or whatever it is, they keep up when the dues are paid, they keep up who hasn't paid dues, and put all that out for the Road Managers Association is what it is.
Well, she work for our association.
Y'all's association don't pay for it, we have check, Mr. Tommy's check.
No, 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 we, we talking about something, I'm just using that.
Yeah.
Our association don't pay for, they, they pay for her housing, right?
Correct.
Right. Are they gonna pay for the house?
That's what I'm saying, they pay for nothing.
But we might, I don't know, we might.
And that's fine, that's really not bringing it before the board, that's really the time to hear, asking that question.
I mean.
Because they said all expense would be paid, and I thought it would come out of the Road Managers Association dues, I've asked that question, but they're saying it comes out of that county paid.
Mr. President, the best way to even handle this, Rob, the person that had that position before her.
The time.
Get a estimate of how, of what she had to pay in the whole year, and bring it back to us, where we can know on the front end exactly what we giving ourselves into. I don't think nobody gonna have a problem with that, but at least we are known.
I, I will, and that's what I say, I mean, we try, I tried to do some research and talk to him, but then, you know, I asked those questions, but, you know, I, I knew it was, that's really, I brought it before the board, before we ever, you know, took another step towards, you know, um. Mr. Gray, I went back and look, I say I went back and looked, I take that back, um, Thomas Marlowe, talking about Sparrow Lane, went through all that, has no knowledge, no nothing, no length, no anything. Uh, E nine-one-one, Miss Alice has been out, look, she don't have any record of it, but Miss Paige found something for us. That road was adopted, and I'm gonna read it out to you, May the third, two thousand four. Curly Jones, Assistant Road Manager, request, requested Sparrow Lane become a part of the county road raster system. Phone motion, uh, Spanky Felker, second by Mr. Greenell. So, two thousand four, it was accepted, but we have no width, no length, Mr. Marlowe, J K S, was engineers, they have nothing on it, uh, so, but I did find it, or she did for us.
Well, to my knowledge, Mr. President, to my knowledge, the only thing the individual contacts me about is getting the road count, is a gravel road.
Correct.
Just.
And it's in bad shape. I wrote.
He's drunk, that's, that's.
And I wrote.
But that individual won't.
But I do want, I just want to bring it forward, board, cause like I said, it has no length, no width, we don't have anything, so, I, I guess I need to go out and see how far, or, or, and I don't know what they adopted back then, but I guess maybe I could go measure, measure the width, and take some pictures and bring it back before the board, and then we'll maybe adopt a length and a width. I, I guess that'd be the right thing to do, huh, Scott?
Has it been maintained and worked or anything like that?
I'm gonna be honest, Sparrow Circle is there, this is an off-road to it. About twenty foot up in there to greater, it was a bad spot, he went in there and worked it, cause it was muddy right there, just in the last month, he didn't know. So, but that's really, we went to check.
Just once and then?
We can't find any work orders at all, us. We don't have any work orders.
I'm, Mr. President, here go the problem, you have one, maybe another individual just built a house there, but the one in the back, she live way in the back, so they probably had never requested for the county to do no work on the road, that's probably why you, you, you had one individual.
Cause they didn't work it, the landowner's been working, or?
Scott, I don't think it was a lot of traffic, is what Mr. Gray's saying, he knows it's not a lot back there, so.
In twenty years, some of them.
And we pulled work orders, are very anxious for them, since we started keeping them on with computers and things like that, and try to see them. And we don't find any work orders that Sparrow Lane was working, now Sparrow Circle has had some attention, you know, which we're gonna black type it, but it, it is county. But I did wanna bring that before Mr. Gray, because he, you know, called, and I told him I would check and see what we could find out, and this is what I come up with.
Well, it shouldn't add it to the road registry.
Well, nothing, like I said, it was tomorrow, he, he didn't have anything, you know?
And nothing had it, you know, has it been worked or not worked, that's the question.
So, but what I'll do is go measure, like I said, get a width, and then see what was, bring it back before the board, and just go from there, I guess.
What's the name of that road?
Sparrow Lane.
Sparrow Lane?
Correct.
Right off of Steam Plant Road. Now that I'm looking at it, it looks like, I couldn't look at it, it's fresh, Rob, but it look like it's a county road, because it got that black land that all, and kinda road trail. So they paid for, for researching.
He's saying it's not in the nine, Tim's saying it's not nine-one-one map, that's what I said, Miss Alice didn't have anything, the trash cans are out front, the mailboxes are out on Sparrow Circle, so.
We got a call out there right now, they want to know where it's at, I say get the most spare stuff.
This is, so we just can do it, say, get, get it.
That's what I say, we need to check, see what the length and width and whatever, and get, well, Miss Alice, like you said, they have a call, they would know where to go either.
We'll go measure.
Well, I, like I said, I mess, I, I do it for some confusion too, cause we didn't have anything on that, I don't know, or whatever. Uh, he said, if they got a call, they would know where to go either.
Yeah, but we need to get this present.
Alright, thank y'all. Really, that's all I have, um, I do know that, um, Um, I do know that, um, contractor requested a, uh, file on work two, E W P, which is Camo, and that Cemetery Road, Dade Ford, um, Doze, and I think Hayden's here, and, uh, I know he sent the request out, so just waiting on whenever.
Yeah.
We can do it, do a file.
All sides.
Okay, uh, but, for the net, that's all I have.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sub, but. I, I just wanna, uh, I don't know if I'm asking too much, but on these E W P projects, when, uh, we get a easement and we do all this with these property owners, it gotta be some kind of way that, because it's a misunderstanding, it gotta be some kind of way that we can explain to the property owner exactly what's gonna take place on their property. Because the last couple of E W Ps, I got a call, and he got a call that, uh, they're using their, their existing dirt on these people's property to work this project. So if you're gonna use the existing dirt that belongs to them, and it's gonna shorten up their property, on the front end, we need to let them know, because if their property over there by, they're walled over there, and you use it, uh, uh, addition of dirt, and, and, and the property end up being over here by me, they don't understand it. You understand what I'm saying? So the only thing I'm saying is maybe if, if that's the case, we need to explain to them that, uh, you, your project gonna be taken care of, we gonna, we gonna do whatever, but you gonna lose some money in the process of us doing this, because they say she better can step outside her backyard now, and she gonna understand that, because she eighty-seven years old. Is that possible?
Well, and I'm gonna let both engineers hear, because they still doing some, and he's doing, he's doing one, but, you know, E W Ps were designed to do a temporary fix. I mean, it's something that's not gonna be a permanent fix or dollar wise. Um, you know, we've said it before, it's been in this BD, Mr. Gray brought it up numerous times. You know, if a project needs a hundred thousand dollars, E W P or what a sole construction allows you fifty or sixty thousand, and we don't have the money to do it like it needs to be done, I guess that's where the design comes in, on the cheaper end of figuring out how to save within that dollar amount. And that is probably use dirt off site to lower grades to do things like that. Am I saying it correctly, Mr. Ford? And Hayden, if you want to speak on it while you're here too, that that's the reason, I think that's done. But it needs to be a better way, and it needs to be, and how to fix that is gonna be a dollar amount, and N R C S is not gonna put but X amount of dollars to it, but then the remainder's gonna fall back on the county and, or whoever. But if it's a hundred thou, they don't allow it with seventy-five, but a hundred would do it right. My thoughts is, it's cheaper on the front end for the county to come up with twenty-five thousand dollars at that point than it is two years or three years later, when it closes out, and we gonna spend.
Three years.
Correct. So I, I think that's, that's the answer on my end, but I will let Mr. Ford or Hayden or whoever wants to.
It's, it's not a temporary fix too, because we have perpetual maintenance.
Well, you do have perpetual maintenance, and perpetual maintenance follows on the county.
That's correct.
We have so many of them, that we don't have somebody that can ride and look at E W P site every day and let you know what's going on. So we ask the landowners to please contact the county if they see any problems or any erosion or things like that, which the landowners don't until it's completely gone, and then it follows on us. So like I said, we're doing twenty-four now, probably done that many last year, probably, I mean, we probably got several hundred throughout Adams County. So that would be almost a full, or once a twice a month job to, to inspect or check every site.
You're doing it on me.
Well, you know, I guess I feel if I didn't wanna sleep at night or whatever, I could do a little more, you know, but, uh.
Mr. President, the only thing I was saying, which he elaborated a little bit more, but the only thing I'm saying is this. If we gonna use the existing dirt on somebody's property, we need to let them know, because they don't know that. That's all I'm saying, if, 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 if their property is over there by Scott, and we gonna cut it down, and it's gonna be end up over here by me, on the front end, those people need to know that. Because they might say, well, I don't even want you doing my property, if I'm, if I'm gonna lose all that, that's all I'm saying.
So, if I may, um, when we do projects like that and we provide them with the, the, um, easement documents, it shows what part, what part of the property's gonna be impacted. At that point in time, I mean, where I've had long landowners, once they receive the documents, reach out to say what's going on with this project, and we'll explain it to them at that time, what's going on with their project. Every project we go on, especially around somebody's property, we let them know that we, that our survey will let them know that they're, that they're there. That any point in time, they can reach out to us and say, hey, what's going on with the project? And we have no problem explaining them, what we planning on doing with this project. As related to using the material on site, um, use of the material that we're using, the material they gonna lose anyway, if we don't do the project. And so we use that material to stabilize their property. What we doing with these projects, we're stabilizing their project. They're gonna lose their property, and so we're stabilizing it. And sometimes it's, it's most cost effective to use the material that's on site, because if you bring in material anyway, we bring in material off site, they're gonna lose that material anyway. So we're using what's on site to try to stabilize their property. What we're trying to do, we're trying to save the yards, and certainly instances with the, any of the property they're going to see today. We try to save their home, because their home was about to be undermined. And so we use material that was on their site to save their home. But if any property, any property owner has any question about what project we're gonna do, we don't have no issue or no problem showing them the plan, showing them the materials that we use, they can just just reach out to us. And if you want to supervise, we're on a project that has a landowner that's directly adjacent to the project, we have a conversation with them, and we discuss it to them for their project, so that's no issue, no problem.
Thank you.
Sub, guys, games. Uh, Mr. Dog, uh, but I know when they pull those digits, some of those are requests dirt. I know, if you know, they probably shouldn't start pulling those digits, can they catch up on them? Because I got something about a year out.
They do.
And they've been, you know, they've been contacting, but and another thing, I do need, uh, if you have, well, we make some time sometime a day tomorrow, uh, right there on, in San Diego, you know, right by, uh, oh, I can take Miss Maroney right there. He had that, those digits is, is, is way too deep. I was coming home the other night, uh, and somebody went off in it in a little car, and, and I promise you, they was, they was upside down, they had two trucks that were trying to pull it out, and, and they couldn't budge it. Just so luckily, I just had, uh, my, my, my dura's hit it enough, and I bagged up to them and got them out, but I thought I was gonna have to go get the tractor to get them, and that, that could be real dangerous. So we definitely need to look at some of those deep, deep digits, I mean, they have, they all the way to the end of the road, so she ain't have no way. I mean, I think she's somebody that was meeting us, but it, it, it pushed the little car off, and I mean, it was, the digit's deep enough, it was jacked up like that. She couldn't even get out of it. So I, I would like for us to try and look at this sometime today.
All right.
All right.
So I have.
If I have a question, Mr. Dog.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We, um, just, I have two items. Um, the contractor completed out of work before for the emergency repair Low Water Bridge site. Um, we had their final inspection on last Tuesday, no punchless items were identified, but the contract's complete. And so therefore, the, uh, the contractor, uh, submitted an invoice, paid the invoice. However, we want to request the, um, payment for the engineering fees in an amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six, fifty cents.
Twenty-three thousand, eight.
Eight seven point five zero.
I'm willing to every change, contractor, twenty-three thousand.
Engineer.
Engineer, twenty-three thousand, eight seventy-five.
Eight seven.
Eight eight seven.
Point five.
Point five.
Got a motion by, uh, supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
And then the Sharpton project, we finally received the plans back from state day on Tuesday. Uh, we're finalized and addressing all those comments and have those submitted back to state day on Friday, on this Friday. Um, um, and we anticipate being given authorization to advertise before the next board meeting. So we would like to go ahead and request authorization to advertise the S A P O one nine and a whole, entrant on the project, um, contingent on state day's approval and authorization.
You heard the question, Ford. Most of my supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? I said.
And just even that, we have already started the surveying and designing for the new E W P that includes the two Magnolia gloves and the Lincoln Heights site. So, uh, any question for me while I'm here? If not, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our turn reports. Is that it?
Right up. Did I drop it away?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Hey, wake up, shooter.
Look, I just got, this is simple here. I have you guys, uh, how y'all doing this morning again? Good morning. Um, got your trash reports here, District one, one and two bags, District two, six, three bags, District three, fifty-six bags, District four, five bags, and District five, six bags. I also have, uh, Mr. President, the, the form I need you to sign, so we can get reimbursed for all this as well.
You heard the request of the chair. Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Ready? Yeah, other things? Uh, I, before I get to that, I do wanna say one thing, I do wanna say I appreciate, uh, Turner Slover and Chancellor and Clerk Derek Burke working with mental health in this, in this community. I know that's a, that's, it seems like a rabbit hole for some people, and nobody really has all the right answers, but I gotta say that I appreciate the efforts that are going forth to get us where we need to be in this community. You know, we've seen Jackson get their saving point of entry, and I just wanted you all to know that your efforts are not going unnoticed of what you all are trying to do here with the facilities that's here and trying to move, get, help get it moved in the right direction. And so we have set up, just so y'all know, to meet with them again on the twenty-first, in reference to them, letting our deputies know what, uh, kind of training they need to look forward to, and making sure we do our part to get this unit out here up to an actual C H U. So, thank you all for your efforts, and thank you all supervisors for supporting us.
Thank you too, Sheriff, for being there and attending meetings and for your interest as well.
Oh, yeah.
It makes it easy when you say, we need this amount of training, and you're like, yeah, we'll, we'll do it. And then hopefully work both ways, where we'll be able to support them, and they'll support the jail when we can't get them diverted, so.
We'll, we'll do whatever we need to do to make it work, because it's a serious issue, and, and I'm just glad this group here is not turning a blind eye to it, that's very much appreciated.
It's a serious issue, and unfortunately, it's the, you know, the statewide systematic problem that they don't seem to want to get out of, and that's out of this whole state mental hospital situation and diverting that money and that services to the actual community. They were ordered to do so, but you hadn't seen any significant changes, not that we knows.
Go ahead, supervisor.
Mr. President, uh, it's really bigger than that, because you looking at homeless people with a mental health problem, and you got people on drugs with a mental health problem. So, I, I, I don't know, understand why the state is not looking at trying to help, uh, individuals that got these kind of problems. I mean, uh, I know we can only do so much, but this is not only a state problem, this is a United States problem. Yes. We could see all the people getting shot, and people just going up, shooting people, going to colleges, kidnapping little kids. These people got problems.
That's true.
And, and, and I don't know how you fix it, but I know that they have a problem, thank you, Mr. Gray.
Well, if they're not addressed when they need to be initially, what a lot of people do, they're just hiding, or their families don't wanna do this, they don't wanna commit somebody or whatever, a lot of this stuff could be avoided. Most of the people you're talking about, Rick, that, that wasn't their first step rush with law. There are very few times you have somebody that's an outlier like that, but, uh, because it wasn't addressed sooner. And I'm gonna say this, um, these meetings have been helpful though, because I know we had a situation that was averted right here in Adams County. And where it could've turned to a pretty serious shooting of several people here in this community. And we were able to reach out to those guys with Southwest, and they were able to help walk me through some of the things that we needed to do. And we were able to confer with the parents and get him a helping need, get all the weapons out. And, and, and that was within twenty-four hours of, of receiving pictures of what was possible and what was coming. We were able to stop that right here in this community, so I'm extremely grateful and thankful, and I do feel like what's being talked about in these sessions and worked on, I think we have a chance to be a model for how other communities can be the same in there. So I'm looking forward to, for progress on that. Um, and speaking of that though, I do have, um, something I don't wanna tell y'all about jail too. You know, in reference to the fire situation that happened over the other day. Thanks to the camera systems that you all purchased, we're gonna be putting felony charges on those individuals today. In the past, we couldn't have seen what we were able to see with how they started to fry with the mattress and all that. But with the camera system that we have in place, and it's almost finished now, we can actually pull up on our phones and monitoring, and the supervisors can actually monitor cameras from pretty much anywhere now, and know to get there before something happens. So I was so glad to see all that caught, captured on video, including the incident with the fight and everything. Everything was captured that whole day, and we're charged every single person in there. We don't need the, we don't need a victim to sign and charge, because we got it all right there in front of us. So thank y'all, because y'all just don't know how much that has helped us tremendously dealing with jail. Thank you. Um, it's been helpful, so. You wanna say something about the other part of it? Not right now? Okay, um, one of the things that we met about in reference to the jail, myself and supervisor Gaines, supervisor Bill, and Attorney Scott Slover, was possibly getting something in place to be able to house some of the inmates, not all of them, in Concordia, but some of them. And as long as it's legal, and I think Scott has looked at it and received his A G's opinion, I would like to house some over there to keep our numbers to where it's manageable at. And what I mean by that is we have quite a few sales that are not working, and I've discussed this with the supervisors, and they know how many it is. And we need to be, keep the population at a certain, um, at a certain population in order to do that until repairs are made, future plans down the road are made to deal with this situation. I know you guys have heard it a lot, and have dealt with it a lot, and I think we're all on the same page that something needs to happen, and I'm hoping that this year, going into next year, maybe we can have meetings outside of here to actually be planning on how to get things done. I talked to supervisor, uh, everybody that I just named already, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not against asking for special legislation to go on alcohol and, and, and beer or cigarettes from, you know, our legislators up there in Jackson, to where maybe every ten cents on the dollar or whatever can go towards, they're just throwing some ideas out to where we can work towards getting this thing done. But if we were able to get that done, it wouldn't cost every taxpayer a dime, nobody, house taxes would go up and things like that. So I'm willing to fight for something like that, because I realize how important it is, and what can be done. But I am asking the board though, can we have some over there? And I, I'm not putting a set number on it, because we haven't met with Concordia, but I've called everywhere from here to Biloxi, and all the way to North Mississippi, and nobody had beds, and, and they stepped up to the plate and were able to help. And we've always had a great working relationship with Concordia, so just putting that on the table to the board. I'll turn it over to you two guys, that you got it there.
So we did meet, uh, and, and, uh, we will meet tomorrow afternoon, I believe, with Concordia's affairs to begin those negotiations, and, uh, see, see where, see where that path may take us. Uh, hopefully, you know, uh, we can give some relief and, uh, see what's in the best interest of not only the sheriff's office, but also Adams County as a whole, to try to alleviate some of these problems. Well, yes, uh, basically, like, uh, at meeting the other day, I said, you know, we gotta come to the table and find a problem to the solution, because we definitely had a problem, and we had an ongoing problem, uh, probably twenty years in before.
And you know, it's a liability not only to the county, to everybody's family. So, you know, I'm ready and everybody, nobody, no, I believe in bringing everybody to the table, not one person. Put everybody at the table and see what kind of solution that we can come up with. And not only to help Adams County, but to help those people inside the jail. Because like I said at the meeting, I know we got hard criminals inside the jail. But regardless of how bad he is, somebody still love him. He's somebody's child. And you know, so we, we gotta look at also housing those folks and trying to keep us alive. So, I'm, I'm excited about sitting down at the table with somebody else trying to come up with a solution. While I got the floor, Sheriff, are we still making progress on installing the project local camera?
We absolutely are and everywhere we're going right now, people are extremely happy. We just had an incident happen the other day that actually got caught on one of those cameras and it's being reviewed at this time. So, yes, they are, they are still moving forward and we'll keep giving you all updates. Matter of fact, we'll get you one today on, you know, where, where the next city is going. But they, they're installed, they're running.
It ain't nothing, I, I, that's, it's the sheriff's business. Because you're the law enforcement, I'm the supervisor. But whatever you do and however you do, as long as it's helping to provide some of these people a better quality life and get them a relief from crime, I'm satisfied. And I trust you to do your job and not micromanage. So, you take care of our year.
When I, when I tell you, you guys just don't know what kind of relief y'all giving the community. Especially in the area where these cameras are going. You know, it's hard to say that you would get a testify in court in front of people. But you gotta hit this call on tape and know, know black and white, it's plain as day what happened. And that, that is really a game changer for us in this community. So, I'm very appreciative of that as well. On that note, Sheriff, we've still got some cameras that we, with the city. Okay, when the new chief takes over, interim chief, will be, be able to work that out? I, I, I'm anticipating. No, I'm, I'm anticipating because I'm definitely gonna need support from the board on getting that meeting done. So, we can talk about that because that funding is already there.
Well, that'll, we'll talk about that in another meeting we talked about.
Okay. Yeah, it's already there. Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. We can get it all out there and get it worked out. There's a thing else too as well. The last thing I have is, I do have two tires for the jails. Thank you, have it in front of you, Mr. President. Zubie and Nisa for the jail. They're coming out of a prison, working, coming to the jail. So, they do have a two years at thirteen, twenty-three now. And I can't pronounce the other name, I'm just gonna say it. Let me try to figure it out. Farquhar Nisa. If I butchered the name, I'm sorry.
They should both be tires.
Yeah, thirteen, twenty-three.
Thirteen, twenty-three, annual twenty-seven, five, eighteen. You heard the request, Chair.
They both coming out of a prison.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have.
And I do want to tell you all something, even considering everything that everybody's gone through and particularly at the Sheriff's Office. I do want y'all to know that even though we lost some people to the A G's office and other places, this community is still looked at as a good place to work. Because right now, I'm happy to say, even though we lost those people, we back up full staff on patrol. And I think we're maybe two people shy of being a full staff in the jail as well. And so, supervisor Gray, even though we might not always agree, I appreciate your candid opinions and all of you all. Because that's what helped us keep that shit moving. Whether we agree or disagree on something, being able to communicate, move on, that's so important and people see that. And I think that's part of the reason why, because they know we do that support of the board when it comes to the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wilson? Thank y'all. All of y'all. Thank you.
All right, I have one more thing. I need permission to travel to Jackson today to do the purchase clerk certification.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Any more departmental reports? Hey, did you have something?
I have only one question for me.
We did, I mean, the last meeting, we discussed that the contractor would complete his part of the group two as far as asphalt and things like that. Yeah, all is complete, I'm saying, I've got pictures, went and looked myself, but that was holding up on, you know, pain to make sure that was done to this meeting.
It's on the docket?
It was from the last meeting.
Yes. But it did, he brought up that he'd done his punch list and completed three. I'm saying, I thought Hayden would bring that up, but.
What it did for Hayden?
It was not on the docket?
My last meeting, he said it was all complete by this meeting.
I haven't seen it been out there. I got, I got a notification on Wednesday from Logan. You haven't been out there, you say? No, I just got the notification Wednesday.
Yeah, but we're talking two different animals. We, we're, what you got.
Hang on one second, hang on one second. I need whoever's speaking to go up to the podium, please. How many splits you got?
I think he was looking at his, he was making his speech and he would be through. You know, they presented another payment or something that Hayden had said to be complete by this meeting. They approved the payment, so I think that might be it.
Okay, we're talking, we got supervisor Hudson's is on the phone. So, would you just say who you are so that she can hear what's going on?
My grandson with Camo Construction. Right now, we're talking two different animals. What we requested Wednesday was a request for substantial completion so that the time stops. And, and, and it did come last Wednesday. So, you know, Hayden needs to go and do what he's supposed to do and then develop a punch list. And then once the punch list developed, then attach it to the letter of substantial completion. And we asked on the letter of substantial completion is to be backdated to the date that we requested it. And then the punch list item will be worked off. Another thing, what I'm trying to find out is on the last payment or pay estimate, it didn't get turned in. So, therefore, it wasn't perfectly eligible to be paid at the last board meeting. Then we said, well, we'll have the asphalt done, so we're gonna, we'll just redo the pay estimate and it'll be done before the next board meeting. And, and it was. So, what I'm trying to find out right now is we should have a check ready for us today or tomorrow for that pay estimate. It was, it was approved at the last board meeting pending that asphalt get done. So, therefore, it was approved at the last board meeting when you bring, maybe I'm wrong, but when you bring those minutes back to here to, to accept them, that means it's put on the docket, correct?
Paperwork, wouldn't necessarily have submission of paperwork, I'm not correct.
Should have been docketed for today.
You had a paperwork.
Did we have a paperwork?
Pay paperwork, we got that, it was on the minutes.
Yes.
It needs, needs to be docketed to run to a docket. Can we run and get a docket?
I, I just.
So, what group is this?
This, this is group two. This is one with B R O last week.
Yes, this is group two.
You got Mr. Mannan over here and somebody else.
It's not, Jason.
Yeah, Jason and Logan was over here.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get a docket in and get a check over to you. It's what Hayden's working on right now.
But am I right in that?
You're, that's how I remember it. My memory is not that good.
No, they, they were here and, but I guess what I'm trying to add is this docket stuff.
Yeah, it's a two-step process.
I've still ain't got it figured out.
It's a two-step process. You get your payer turned in.
Right.
It gets approved and then it's docketed on the next meeting. Last meeting, we had approved pending some stuff, but we said to go ahead and submit it to the docket.
That's right.
And it just didn't make it. And that's okay, we'll get a docket in to get it approved today.
Okay.
And that's what they're working on, please.
And like I said, we, we requested the letters or the substantial completion and then Hayden will do, you know, his stuff and then we'll get the problem or I don't see, I don't use the word problem, but part of the struggle is getting everybody that's involved together on a date to do it. Because we gotta be there, board, I mean, the county gotta be there, Hayden gotta be there and then R C S gotta be there.
So, and that's the same project.
So, listen. Yeah. Mr. President, does anyone gotta know the amount that we talking about?
We approved it last, we're talking about last.
Give me the one forty-nine, a one hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars?
That's it.
That's how it is.
That's it. Because it was one thirty plus another twenty-seven, something like that.
Motion to amend the agreement regarding the contract payment on E W P group two made by Supervisor Wilson and seven other Supervisors Gray and Adams County. Please follow the paper. Increase the contract stipulations that the work was completed. That's what we talking about.
Here's a go right there, yeah. You're right.
Hey, Meyer, be here, sir. The, the runway out there for, what's, what's going on with that?
So, everything's complete except for one punch list item, which we'll be taking care of Wednesday night.
But they are gonna do it tonight.
They are gonna do it tonight. So, there is some other, some other repairs like end repair that they're gonna have to sign it down. And but we're taking care of all of that too. So, it's not quite complete, but it is open and functioning.
Okay, the last thing I heard, they wanted to shut the airport down for a day or two.
Well, that was not for that at all. It's about, it's about a five-hour job. And it has to be closed to do the work. So, Richard just didn't want to close during the day. It was supposed to be originally night work anyway, but then the contractor agreed to do it at night.
Okay. All right, long ago had that worked out. Thank you. Do we have any updates on Rob's play?
No, but I'll check. I know it's, it's with attorneys. I don't know, Rob Scott might have more than I do.
Last I checked, attorney's gonna talk to you, your attorney was gonna talk to you in a sippy hat.
He has.
Okay.
But that was like a month ago.
I'll reach out to him then.
Don't you just love attorney?
Yeah, it's the worst part of my job.
Anything else? Anything else for Hayden? Thank you.
All right, good day, thank you.
Any more departmental reports? Next on the agenda is the redistricting approval. I know supervisor Hudson's is not here today, but she is on the phone. So, what's the desire of the board, supervisor Hudson, what's your desire?
Do what? I mean, we had to have a special meeting.
Do you, do you have any problems with, uh, three? With plan three?
I don't have any problems with the last, I mean, uh, plan three.
I'm gonna make the most of it.
But, excuse me, is that the one that where we made the changes? Uh, with Liberty Road? That's where we made the change to, and then second on Liberty Road.
Or you and I?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the one. Plan three is where one stays the same, two gives up, um, Jeanette Cross and what have you, two, three. And then you and Ricky have. And three gives, you give three, uh, people off, even four, right?
No. No, no, I didn't, I didn't give any people, my, I say the same one, sorry. I didn't give up any people on that. No, I gave up a mortgage, I didn't give up any, uh.
You gave up mortgage.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, so, two guys.
You gave up what? Mortgage counting up?
In the ivory lane, that, that's all, that's all, no.
Angel, are you both beside a computer?
I'm not beside a computer.
I was on, I'm gonna forward you plan three.
I'm not beside a computer.
I'll email to you.
If, if, if plan three allows, uh, the plan three allows just the Liberty Road, it's a Jeanette Cross and Liberty Road, right?
Yes. That's correct. That's, that's the only change.
Yeah, so, it goes Liberty Road, Ogden Road, those are the two, Springfield, that sound nice to you? And then that's the same one? That's the same. I think that's the only change for three. Y'all gonna print them out and you look over for you? Oh, yeah, pick it.
I just, I wanna make the most of it, we adopt plan three.
You got a motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? Supervisor Hudson, are you comfortable with this?
Yes, I'm just like, uh, keep the, you know, uh, men did the changes for me and, uh, Supervisor Wilson.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor to adopt proposed plan three. Motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes have. Public comments? No, 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 you were departmental.
No, no, no. I didn't, I didn't, I did a fifth I C O. I just want to congratulate the sheriff, he gonna be graduating this Friday from Jackson State University. So, I just want to thank him for getting his degree.
Appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You can catch Friday, ladies and gentlemen.
Drink my ass, take a light with you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Captain Luth and I'm a former employee for the Adams County. Can you?
If you got a complaint or something, we're gonna have to deal with that in the executive session.
I won't start without.
You're right. All right, uh, come to the table, supervisor Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, it's gotta have a very interesting about the water bills over there that, that these people supposed to be emailing you something.
Yes, sir, I got a phone conference at four o'clock with the Mississippi Public Service Commission's attorney. And I can remember, I told you, I told Moore, I know both of them on that. They had been talking with Council for Break River, that's the place, that's the company that placed the huber. And so, report back to you when we get that. The Public Service Commissioner is very, very concerned about this. And according to their attorneys, looking at it very, very carefully too. So, I'll report back to you what we can do and so forth. Hopefully, we'll have news as to what proposed rates will actually be. I know there was things out there saying a obscene amount of money to work on, so that's.
Mr. President, well, the problem was from what the lady showed us at the neighborhood watching, they, they, they water bill was going down. They ain't never seen nothing like it. So, thank you for looking into it and keep us informed on, on what's going on. Now, we have a resolution, excuse me, uh, this tonight, he's, he'll be a hundred and three years old on the, what is it, the ninth of the tenth. Uh, Mr. Gaines? Friday, I hope you're not busy. They want somebody to help you, just. If you busy, then they gonna be at Route Sixty, Route One, for six o'clock, and somebody need to be here, because I'm gonna be gone.
Friday evening?
Friday evening at six o'clock.
I ain't trying to make a work.
Please, uh, moving on. I talked to Brandon earlier about the time clocks and, uh, uh, I don't make a res- a recommendation that the human resource, uh, office be moved back to where it was. Uh, I don't, I don't, me personally, I don't think that office need to be inside another office. When we set it up, it was supposed to be like a, a, a standalone office and not in nobody else's office, because you can't really focus on doing what you're doing if, if that office is in somebody else's office, that's my recommendation. Uh, and I talked to Brandon and the county administrator earlier that all our jobs, uh, need to be, uh, put on the county website because I guess we still doing, if a, a, a person that worked with the county could get first preference to these jobs before they put it all out to the public. If you already working here and you wanna transfer it, and you qualify to transfer it, you, you need to, uh, be notified first. Yet, yet me, now, I don't know how nobody else feel. And I'm gonna be short today. I wanna, uh, congratulate the sheriff, and, uh, I feel like if an employee is moved up from a worker to a supervisory position, then the county need to offer them some training. Because it's totally different between being a worker and once you supervising other people. So, uh, you, you, you can't blame the individual for not doing his job if we not, if we haven't, uh, gave him or her some training to be able to do his job. And, uh, I wanna congratulate the new elected judge, uh, Judge Carmen Drake. And in the process of, uh, congratulating her, uh, uh, I'm asking you, Scott, and the rest of the board members, are we gonna take names for to fill her position once she, uh, is sworn in as judge? We, we need to put it out there that we gonna take lawyer names, and this board gonna choose from the list that they submitted us to replace her in the county prosecuting office.
And it is, in the past, Ricky, that is what this board has done, has gotten a couple of names, uh, and selected from those names to do it. Um, it's discretion of the board, however they do it, other than you do have to select a licensed attorney.
Right.
But that's how we've done in the past.
Well, I'm just putting it out there saying.
I think that's good.
She take office in January?
Yes.
So, we need to put it out there now, so we can go and get a list of names and, and kind of look over and be able to.
Would that be interviewed?
It would be up to the prerogative of the board if they want to interview.
I mean, if all of us could agree on one person, then, if, if, if we can't agree, maybe we need to, I don't know, it's just.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't know that you'd do that in the past.
Uh, last, uh, I just want to.
So that would require a special call meeting, correct?
If you're gonna do it this month, then you would need to, wouldn't have to be a special call meeting, have to be a meeting besides this one. You can call them up, want to interview now. Um, but the vacancy will not happen until.
January.
Until January, that, that first meeting in January, you declare a vacancy, you appoint somebody else. You don't have to do a special call lecture because the next elections, the regular elections are, you know, less than a year away. So, that's what you need to do. You, I believe, again, I'll have the resolution ready to go and all that, but I believe that, that they fill the rest of the term. It's not immediate, appointed from the election, but we'll have it confirmed to, to be sure.
Okay, and, uh, I, I, I personally don't have a, a problem with the consultants, but, uh, I think they've done a great job, uh, with the test that we put before them. And, uh, uh, when you come to giving somebody a raise, uh, my thing is this, uh, what are they working on? I mean, they done did everything we asked them to do. As a board, we haven't, uh, gave them nothing to work on, but we gonna give them a raise. To me, that's crazy. Anyway, we need to look into that. And I simply go back to the, uh, Patton family, the Carter family, the Foster family, the Murray family, the Weeks family, and the family, uh, the Prophet family, Prophet, like ninety-five years old, so she lives a pretty good life. And, uh, that kind of concludes my report. No, no, one more thing. Uh, if we don't have another meeting, I just want to wish everybody a safe holidays and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Supervisor Grant. Supervisor Hudson?
Okay, I don't have anything. I just wanted to say, uh, if I don't see you wanting to support the New Year or Christmas, I would give you one of Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. A promise of Happy New Year.
Tell them that December fifteenth is supposed to have fun.
Uh, did you hear earlier, the December fifteenth for the county, uh, launching?
I have, I have a notion that, uh, the local office of this plan is developed and local board is Jackson on that day. I have a meeting there.
Okay.
This Kevin fuck.
Just making sure. All right, Supervisor Wilson?
Those things, um, I, I was thinking about, uh, the four thousand, five thousand, he was talking about, uh, our, our consultants and it seemed like we balked a little bit at the five thousand initially, and they lowered it to four thousand per year.
I think they came at us with five thousand and they went back to their original price. And then it was gonna go up in October to five thousand.
Uh, uh, that's kind of, I just wanted to clear that up here. Um, I'm gonna ask Miss Lewis over there about this. Did the airport get refunded its money for the hangar damages from the general fund? Did that go through?
I'll go check.
Uh, they asked about that before, I, I know I talked to Angie about that, but I don't know if it ever got transferred back.
Okay.
The insurance money came in, it went back in the general fund, and it needs to be transferred to the airport.
I'll go check on the check.
If not, they'll be short and we'll have to cover it anyways.
Awesome. Okay, well, most everything else I was gonna ask about either got cleared up during the departmental report, so I just want to wish everybody a, uh, Merry Christmas and, uh, hopefully we'll see everybody on the fifteenth. Um, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Supervisor Gaines?
Uh, well, I, I would like to, uh, go back and kind of piggyback on what Supervisor Gray had, uh, said about employee training. Uh, I, I really do think we need to look, take a deeper look into that when we move people up, and it's good to move people up, uh, out of the departments because people who work the jobs have great experience, but sometimes, when you don't work with folks a whole lot of time, it be difficult on both ways. Sometimes, you being a friend and now you being a boss, it, it's a little different. And now, with them being your friend and having to be up under you, so it can go both ways. So I think we definitely need to take a good look at trying to get people training, even when we hired them to make sure they had the proper training to lead people because just because you are a leader, don't make you effective manager of people. And so that's something we need to consider, and, um, I just wanna, uh, do the same as everybody else, hopefully we'll get to see each other on the fifteenth, and if we don't see each other, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and that concludes my report.
Miss Dean?
I don't have anything.
Miss Lewis?
I just have a couple of things to go on the minutes. Um, we have the meal report for the sheriff's office for November twenty-twenty-two, and you have that spread out some minutes, please.
You heard the request.
I'm on.
Supervisor Brandon, saying by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have.
Vanessa Townsley, who, uh, was a court boarder for the Chancery judges here, um, had items that she approached archives and history about and got confirmation that she could dispose of some, um, tapes and her stenographic notes from the court, and that is listed spread out some minutes, uh, per NDAH, and so I have that, uh, authorization from NDAH signed up on, uh, Vanessa and the director layers, so you have it spread out some minutes.
I heard your request.
I'm on.
Most by Supervisor Gaines, saying by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have.
We have the December bond renewals for A.G. King, Chrissah Thomas, and Marilyn Jackson, and you have those spread out some minutes.
You heard the request. Most by Supervisor Gaines, saying by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have.
Um, the last meeting, I brought, um, I just reminded the board that we had a request from the Mississippi Regional Housing Authority, um, asking for the board to appoint someone to that. I can't recall, but I came back to the Supervisor Gray, I had this question. The board did not have a member on the board before now, so this is a, a new appointment, there was nobody that, that left or vacated or needed to be replaced. So I didn't think the board had time to consider that, if they'll have anyone that you wanted to.
I have somebody about January, I'm sure they had time to look into that. I mean, uh, me personally, I think that was a very important position because of the shortage of housing that we have in this community. And we need somebody that really understand, uh, what's going on with the housing in this community, because, uh, I'm hearing it all the time, we got a very, uh, shortage of available housing in this community.
I can put back my phone with the person. Let's all have, thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Uh, the county's mental health plan, I know we talked a couple weeks back about it. Um, we really haven't been comfortable approving any formal plan while the situation with the jail was a little bit, you know, a little bit in the flux, but it sounds like we haven't met with Southwest and told them our concerns about converting the crisis stabilization unit into a single point of entry. And it's, and almost as important for us, we're just getting some much needed services for those who don't qualify for that single point of entry. Uh, for, just for recap on people, the way the mental health is supposed to be is your, your first contact with them, you're trying to divert them from any type of taking them out of their, their home setting. Uh, and so you have a crisis intervention team, which is consistent, crisis intervention training, that's something that the sheriff's already were getting some training on, but now they've really, gonna get a lot more. I think most, have a lot of deputies on, at least one per shift, uh, so they'll have that. There's people that are trained specially to de-escalate and address mental health needs. Um, so that's the first thing, it's not to take anybody out of any setting. The next step then is to put them in a setting that actually gets them for treatment, I may call that a single point of entry. Typically, it's a crisis stabilization unit, uh, and for whatever reason, we didn't have our crisis stabilization unit as a single point of entry. So, we addressed that with the mental health, uh, the crisis stabilization unit are in the plan of getting that into a single point of entry. Um, and that needed some sort of cooperation, not only from the sheriff's office, which was not hard to, to kid, because that's where they wind up in jail, um, but also from the Nash's Police Department, and I think that we do have a good buy-in from the police department. Uh, they said they will, really just have to commit to get trained, and then committing to help the crisis stabilization unit that's not getting achieved as it's supposed to. And then the final step is then into the jail, that's, they can't be, if they don't qualify for the crisis stabilization unit, you put them into the jail. But you don't put them in a jail without some sort of, uh, mental health services, and we just, we don't have the capacity to do that. And so the Southwest has to come in and provide that, that sort of service. The rest of the counties that were gonna join in us with our region, um, I say that, that, I believe that's the case, but I don't think they formally adopted their plan except for Wilkinson County. Uh, basically is to, uh, we kind of work it as a co-concurrent plan is what, what our group says, that means you're working two plans simultaneously. We still think that the best way to do it is to have our own community-based mental health treatment here in town, which would consist of our, our counties that are, you know, connected to us all in the same community. Uh, but if we're gonna continue with the larger region, that we do things such as having, uh, people that are more stakeholders involved as the actual commissioners. For instance, I think it, it heavy, uh, as they get either someone from the sheriff's office or get someone from the Chancery Court's office as your commissioner. Uh, these are the ones that have kind of acute mental health needs. Um, Wilkinson County did not want to give, you know, or commit any additional funding from the source until they saw more improvements, and so the plan that we would, if it's the board prerogated, the plan that we would do is, would be similar to that. Not gonna commit any additional funding till we see additional financial improvement as well as services, uh, committed. So, if that's something that the board, we can amend our current plan to include that, which what Wilkinson County did. Um, the state would find that acceptable, at, at least that's what the, uh, state is commit, uh, has reported that to us. And it's not any additional money. At the meantime, if they start seeing improvement, though, then they ask for a moral supplement. And in my mind, if you get your finances straight, you're talking small potatoes with the money, not Atlantic counties, but anyway, it's a fee for services organization. And if you're providing those fees, those services, you're not earning those fees, so they shouldn't actually need the additional money. They should need is to provide those, those particular services, that's neither here nor there. Um, but if that's the, if that's okay with the board, we can go ahead and, you know, adopt that plan.
Zire, in board.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to them.
Motion by Supervisor Wilson, for your second. Saying, saying by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? Discussion.
Guess, y'all comfortable with it?
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure.
Yeah, it's what it is.
I know, but I'm saying, I know it is what it is, but are you comfortable?
I think it's our best, I think it's, it's the, you know, the best of the worst decisions, I mean.
We're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, we are.
And as the sheriff alluded to, these meetings have been very fruitful. I mean, um, AMR was there last time, they had representation, the, the city had representation from the PD. Um, a lot of, uh, people from Southwest Mental Health were there, the new director of the, the CSU was there. So, I, I think that that's honestly been, communication is key in leaving, especially when we weren't having everyone at the table and face-to-face and, you know, talking to each other. I mean, emails can only go so far, so I feel like that these meetings have been very helpful. And I know that you and Supervisor Gray expressed to be made aware of the next meetings. I'm not aware if anyone has been, if one has been sent Sheriff to you now?
Twenty-first.
It is the twenty-first, okay, okay.
Right. She's gonna email, email, uh, thing, uh, time.
All right, thank you, well. Any more discussion?
And that one really didn't originate as the mental health part of it, it originated as our lawsuit, jail kind of situation. We good, that wasn't intentional, we good or not good.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Eyes have.
There was, uh, Wayne Herring made a presentation a couple of meetings ago with the contract for digitizing those tax cards, those, you know, full scales. Uh, they provided an agreement, uh, yeah, they, I got handed to them, they, they cut and paste it all my typical addendums and stuff that I put in there on my addendum, put that into the contract. So they hid it all at the, at the pass on. Um, this is for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars over the course of forty-eight months. That's gonna end over our term agreement, actually, it comes voidable, uh, if it extends beyond a, a term of supervisors. But voidable is different than void, void is automat, it's just automatically not enforceable. Voidable means that the county could opt out of the contract. We actually have a lot of voidable agreements that end up extending beyond the time of, of the board, but the board has to take affirmative action to people. So it's really beneficial to have for the, if you're, if you're representing a client, that's a contract and voidable, you can just void it out, so that's not bad necessarily. Contrary to what, I guess we got into it with a, with a local order for local office, but say, uh, that, uh, you know, stood firm, I mean, stay actually agreeable, is that the way? And we approve it and, uh, funding should have already been there. I think we covered it.
So, most of my supervisor Gaines, second, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have.
And I'm gonna get with Supervisor Gray on one of the minutes properties that we've talked about. Um, before we do anything on that, I don't know what your direction is on that.
You talking about Booker Brown?
Yes, sir.
I mean, uh, yeah, deal with me because, I mean, if we don't manage doing that, there's a whole lot of people in this county that want to be a debt.
And that's it?
Um, Scott, that email from Namby, can you? I, I read it a couple of times. It looks like, um, concerning the four million dollars. Um, trying to get everybody to go with to pay down the debt.
Yes, sir.
Suggested that we use it to pay cash, whatever. Uh, but we've already done all that. We've already paid all our EWP's and all that stuff, I assume. So we probably need to go to the second part of that. I don't think y'all have seen that. He just recommends that we pay down, uh, three or four different things. Um, Scott's got the email right there.
Yes. Use the four million dollars as cash for projects or matching funds for grants since you're applying for. You have a low interest rate on your outstanding general obligation debts. If this is not what the county desires, then pay off the following, uh, three point oh five, I'm sorry, three one zero three five, uh, for a two point six seven outstanding. Then there's general obligation for two point six eight five. And then there's a two point six two. So that's the word he, he presented basically the highest it was. The three point oh three five, I'd have to go pull these bonds to see which ones kind of were the road bonds or whether they were a technology bond. We'd went for that and then, you know, figure which ones live. So if it's a client, it doesn't matter from, I mean, your standpoint.
Yeah, but, yeah, I, I just thought, you know, if we're, we're not gonna have another board meeting for a while and we're just continually throwing money away, um, on interest that we don't, we shouldn't be, shouldn't be paying if we've got the money to pay that off. Um, we got the criteria there and I, um, so I, I still want to make a motion that we use four million dollars of, uh, care of that money to pay that debt.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Got a motion by Supervisor Wilson, take your second. Take your second. I've not had time to read that email. I'm just gonna be honest with you, so.
Who did the email to?
Avery's this morning and, and I think I got it Saturday or Sunday. So that's when I just got it. Says, "You should be in your email now, Ricky." Particularly with yours. I also like the print that you have in your box too. I don't know, sometimes stuff getting, uh, with a troll, whatever.
Motion has for like the second. Scott, though, you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. King, do you have anything?
We just said one thing. I'd like board approval to, we have a, a, a account.
You want to do an air phone hunt?
Well, our air phone loan for the one being seventy thousand, one oh two sixty-three to go into general funds to take us through the year.
You heard it, Wes. Oh, who? Got a motion by Supervisor Gaines. Take your second.
Second. Where, where the money coming from?
Sixty.
We have an account.
It's a reserve, a reserve account from various option and lease payments on rent that. Not expenditures or.
Take your second.
Indeed.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have. Where you?
Just for the record, guys, it's fourteen thousand dollars a month every time we pass on this payment, four million dollar debt. Now we're throwing in trash can. You know, it's not our money.
In the folder, I have a letter from Dr. Delon Sims, Co-Lin, uh, laying board, notifying board that Mr. Gilbert's term on Co-Lin Community College Board of Trustees was fired December thirty-first. Gilbert has been a active member of the board since two thousand and two and requests that you consider reappointing Mr. Gilbert or naming another person for this position.
I don't know. Yeah, we agree.
Second by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have. Here's an invitation in here for Reefs Across America, Saturday, December seventeenth. Nine AM, the Dalian Cemetery, eleven AM, Nash's National Cemetery, and one PM, Green Lawn Memorial Park. I have a travel. I have, this is already been signed. Is this already been approved? Um, Scott, did we have any info lately on Burke Road? For the right ways? I will.
Reach out to our, the right away acquisition group over at, whatever they're called, uh, Product.
And any more updates on the winners and losers?
Yes, there was an email. I talked with FEMA this morning, and that was on Friday, regarding a contract to re-removal project. This project is still in review stage, however, is anticipated that review be completed late next week. I will call FEMA again on Friday or next week for another update. That was on February December second by our ER disaster fund group.
So maybe by this Friday we can, talk over the draw.
Yeah. They say that often, uh, by the end of the week, but.
Uh, that's all I had. I believe we had a lot of debate terms.
President, that's, um, leadership group coming in, Marry and Natalie, y'all gonna be here to discuss county government with the, uh, leadership group?
I'll try my best to be here.
I'm gonna need two of y'all.
I'll let you go, see.
Ricky, do you know the point of contact is for that?
Basically.
Okay, I just had heard.
Uh, you have a high, big term. So. Second by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have.